Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. We have Pastor Peggy Dunston from the Bellevue Christian Center here with us this evening. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for having me. If you just wouldn't mind bowing your heads with me. Again, I'm Peggy Dunston. I'm one of the pastors over at Bellevue Christian Center. And just a privilege that we have to come pray with you tonight. I thank you tonight, God, for these your servants, our mayor, our city administrator, our chief of staff, our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joys and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, oh God, in your love and peace. Help us to trust you the more. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. And so that we pray that you would be glorified through the decisions of this city council. We pray that we will have eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom will come in Bellevue as it is in heaven. Father, we pray that your truth will be revealed and that your light will shine. Tonight, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. Bless those that protect us, our police officers, our firefighters. Bless our schools and their staff. We need you tonight, and we bless everyone and everything that's going to be discussed tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Peggy. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilwoman Welch, Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Collins.
Here.
And Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of the agenda consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm having technical difficulties. I vote yes.
Okay.
Phil.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an ask risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item six, approval of the claims. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. To approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Just a second. Who was the motion on that? Mayor?
Preister, second by Burns.
Can I vote yes?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have one. Seven A is proclamation declaring May twelfth through eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Bike Week and May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as the International Ride of Silence. Actually, we have two, but we'll start with the proclamation. I'm gonna read this from here, since the lighting's better for me, and then I'll let you talk a little bit. So Bike Week and Ride of Silence proclamation. Whereas the city of Bellevue, Nebraska encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation and recreation, and whereas the city of Bellevue, Nebraska recognizes the bicycle as a legitimate roadway vehicle and therefore is entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in Nebraska except highways constructed to interstate standards. And whereas the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, recognizing the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation and recreation, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources and fostering exercise. And whereas the League of American Bicycleists has established May as National Bicycle Month and the mayor establishes May as Bicycle Safety Month, which includes the International Ride of Silence, the twenty-first of May, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P M. And whereas the Ride of Silence is endorsed locally by the Bellevue Bicycle Club. Now therefore, I, Rusty Hike, Mayor Bellevue from Nebraska, do hereby proclaim May twelfth to eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, as Bike Week in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, and May twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five, as the International Ride of Silence in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. To encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling and to participate in the Ride of Silence, whereupon I subscribe my name and seal of the city of Bellevue, Rusty Hike. And I'll let you talk, and then maybe we'll grab a couple of pictures.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor Hike, and City Council for the Bike Week proclamation and your support for the Ride of Silence, the great job that the city has done and will do in the future to make Bellevue a destination or a distinction for alternative modes of transportation. This year, the Bellevue Bicycle Club, along with the Omaha Peddlers Club, will gather at the Twin Creek Trailhead to observe the International Ride of Silence on Wednesday, May twenty-first, at seven P M. This marks the twenty-third anniversary of this event, which is designated to honor the memories of those killed or injured in car bicycle-related accidents. This ride is carried out in silence on the same day all over the world. Two hundred and twenty-eight locations, forty states, sixteen countries, five continents, with zero words spoken. It brings, it is bringing the increased awareness to the safety needs for cyclists while on the road. In two thousand twenty-four, three cyclists were killed in the state of Nebraska. In two thousand twenty-three, six were killed during, including the high-profile death of Matthew Lataha, a cardiologist and electrophysicist with the Methodist Physicians Clinic. Dr. Lataha was riding, as he did many mornings, on a flat, open road in rural western Omaha. This accident was focused attention on the dangers facing cyclists. If motorists are distracted or unaware of their surroundings, as well as the laws related to cyclists on the roadway. This year, Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hanson will speak briefly at the Ride of Silence to raise awareness of the safety of cyclists and the continued problem of distracted driving. We thank you for your support and hope many of you will join us and ride with your friends and neighbors. The Bellevue Bicycle Club and our partners with the Omaha Peddlers Club on the Ride of Silence, again, Wednesday, May twenty-first, at seven P M.
And thank you. And since they're being recorded, I need you to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael McGee. I live in Omaha, Nebraska, three zero two seven, South Forty-Ninth Avenue.
Thank you. And if we could all jump up front and just grab a picture, that'd be great.
Right. Perfect. I didn't write it on the list here.
All right, council two.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ride safe.
All right. Thank you to the Bellevue Bicycle Club as well. Item seven B, Groserpi, first quarter update. Lisa Sheevy, Executive Director, Groserpi.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Wanted to kind of talk through our first quarter report. The slide they have up there is looking at permits. Things have been a little bit down for this year compared to last year. But I would say that in general, overall, including our own project intakes that we've had, the state of the economy really put a pause on a lot of growth opportunities. And so I think a lot of people are trying to really evaluate that, evaluate the effects of tariffs and what that looks like. Not terrorists, tariffs, sorry. Apologies. It's late in the day. Sorry about that. So as it affects their business and what that looks like in their growth models. So I'm happy to say, though, that project activity has continued to kind of pick up here throughout the month of April. So that is a promising sign that people kind of pause things but have evaluated and are continuing to move forward. Couple of things I wanted to share with you tonight that are not in the report but would be timely is we held our first Trades Day event about two weeks ago. So you've heard me talk about our construction kit program before. This was a new program to kind of build off of the momentum we've created with the construction kits. And so the construction kits are handed out during the first semester, and we wanted to do something second semester. And we wanted to focus on something with older students, so more, something more towards juniors and seniors. And so we had just shy of one hundred students participate. We had seven construction companies, five unions, and one community college that participated. And they had different stations, and each student spent twenty minutes at each station, and then they rotated. We had various hands-on activities for them to experience, everything from welding to learning how to use a backhoe. Kids got to be able to climb in and try to pick up a ball and move it and put it inside of a basket. So they were good, hands-on experiences. And employers were able to have one-on-one conversations about what career paths looked like for them. I think overall that it was a really, a really great event, and I think we've created a lot of momentum around it, and people were already asking about, when are we gonna do this again next year? So I think it's great to have the construction kits be introduced to students in the eighth and first, or freshman year, and then to be able to continue that on as we go into high school. So I think you'll continue to hear me talk about it and build upon the momentum that we created. So really, like I said, I think a really great experience for everyone. Project intake has been, like I said, has been a little bit slow, but I think things have kind of picked up, and we're continuing to grow momentum. I'm excited to partner with the city of Bellevue on their upcoming retail trip that they're taking. So we're happy to be a part of that and see how we can contribute to the conversation. With that, I'd open it up to see if anyone had any questions that I might be able to answer for them.
Any questions for Lisa?
Okay. Last time I was here, there was a blizzard, and so I made sure to make things snappy. Tonight, the weather is beautiful, so I tried to make sure that I kept things snappy so people can get out and enjoy it, so.
Well, go enjoy. Thank you, Lisa.
Yep, have a great night.
Thank you. Item eight is on consent. Item nine, approved citizen communication. We have none. Item ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, an application for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, spirits, on and off sale, or W and P Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Patent Wally's, located at seven oh one Galvin Road South, Suite one fourteen, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight oh oh five. And Brandon Walref as manager, and approval of a temporary operating permit. And I will open up ten A for public hearing. If there's anyone here wanting to speak, please come forward. And I know the applicant is in the audience. If the council has any questions for him. So while the public hearing is open, if there's anybody wanting to speak, please come forward. Council have any questions for Mr. Walref? No? Okay. I'll close the public hearing since there's nobody coming forward, and do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, an application for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, spirits, on and off sale for W and P Enterprises, doing business as Patent Wally's, located seven oh one Galvin Road South, Suite one one four, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight zero zero five. And Brandon Walref as manager, and approval of a temporary operating permit.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. And thanks, Brandon, for coming out. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four one eight two, request to approve the detachment of tax lot twenty-six and part of tax lot twenty-eight adjacent, located in the southwest quarter of Section One, Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of tax lots one and two A, north and west of railroad right-of-way, located in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section thirteen, Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with the portion of tax lot one and two A, as described and filed for record August sixteenth, nineteen sixty-three, in deeds records book one fourteen, page five ninety, located in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section thirteen, Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant, city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one eight two, an ordinance to detach from the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four one eight two.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven B, ordinance number four one eight three, request to amend Section nine dash three, subsection one of the Bellevue Municipal Code, to amend the Ward one boundary to account for the de-annexation of off-air force-based property. Applicant, city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one eight three, an ordinance to amend Section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised city council ward boundaries to repeal subsection one of Section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing regarding the Ward one boundary and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve ordinance number four one eight three.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four one eight four, request to vacate all of the right-of-way within the limits between Eighteenth and Twentieth Street, a platted and recorded addition to Sarpy County, Nebraska. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one eight four, an ordinance to vacate that part of the alley right-of-way described as between lots one through six, block one, except the west ten foot, and lots seven through twelve, block one, except the west ten foot, and lots seven, eleven through twelve, block one, Swift Place, and lots one through two and twenty-three, block four, Swift Place, lots three through five, block four, Swift Place, lots six through eleven and twelve B, block four, Swift Place, Bellevue, a subdivision in the Sarpy County, Nebraska, with title thereto vesting in the abutting property owner and to provide an effective date therefore.
Thank you. And I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number four one eight four. If there's anyone wanting to speak regarding the ordinance, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding twelve A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading will be May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction. First reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four one eight five, request to rezone lots one and two, Mr. T's addition replat two, being a replat of lot one, Dvorsky's Commercial Subdivision two, and lot one, Mr. T's addition replat one, from BG and ML to BG and ML for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant, John Howell, general location, Thirty-Sixth Street and Cornhusker Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one eight five, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number four one four six, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about South Thirty-Sixth Street and Cornhusker Road. More particularly, described in Section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M. Thirteen B, ordinance number four one eight six, an ordinance to approve the real estate exchange agreement to provide an effective date and authorize the mayor to sign. Administration has requested the three readings be waived, hold a public hearing at tonight's meeting, and to vote after the public hearing. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one eight six, an ordinance to approve the exchange and conveyance of approximately twenty-fifth acres of city property to the Bellevue University, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation.
That it?
I think so. Did we get it all?
Seemed short, but.
It did seem short. That is it. That's it.
We good? All right. Thank you. Make sure we stay in compliance here. So do I have a motion to suspend the rules to start with? Councilwoman Collins?
I'm making a motion to suspend the rules regarding ordinance number four one eight six.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Burns, to suspend the rules, hold public hearing tonight, and vote after public hearing at tonight's meeting. Are there any questions on the suspension? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, that passed, so I will open up the public hearing for thirteen B, which is ordinance number four one eight six. Is there anyone here that wants to speak regarding the ordinance? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four one eight six, please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to now approve ordinance number four one eight six.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Are there any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to compliment staff. I think this is a good swap. It's land where we can use it by the new library, and it's putting some existing land back into use by the public. So I think everybody wins, the public wins, Bellevue University wins, and the city wins. And it's an even swap, except for a little bit of cash, but they're gonna do service. So it's so nice and so sweet. I'm glad to see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Burns, to approve ordinance number four one eight six. four one eight six. Please vote.
All voting yes, mo- motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you to Bellevue University for always being a great partner. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A request to final plat lots one through five Bellevue Entertainment District being a plating of tax lots twenty twenty one except for the right of way and twenty two all located in northeast quarter of section twenty two township thirteen north range thirteen east of the six P M Sarpy County Nebraska applicant city of Bellevue general location northwest corner of highway seventy five and Hidden Valley Drive. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you Mayor, motion to approve item fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B request to small subdivision plat lot one Jenna's Corner being a replat of lots nine through eleven and nineteenth through twenty one block one Randolph Place and half of the vacated alley adjacent and waiver of section six dash seven for subdivision regulations regarding through lots applicant Chuck Shanahan general location twenty five twenty Olive Street. And I will open up fourteen B for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Anyone regarding fourteen B that wants to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I will move to approve item fourteen B.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen is resolutions, fifteen A resolution number two zero two five dash zero seven update of master fee schedule. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Thank you Mayor, I make a motion to approve fifteen A.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen current business. Looks like everybody's been busy. Sixteen A approve the amendments to the city council policy resolutions. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I will move to approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I just wanna com- co- compliment staff on this and the council. I think we worked very well together. There were some things that we wanted to verify in state statute that were valid, some were changed, some streamlining, some things adjusted to where they're in other places. And I know it took time, but it was a great cooperative effort and I think we got to a good result. And I just wanna thank everybody for working diligently on it. And I think in future times, there'll be much less to do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with lift up Sarpy County for the Bellevue community response and outreach in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I'll move to approve item sixteen B as you just read.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with Bellevue Public Schools for the family literacy program in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with all seasons foundation for the assistance for vulnerable adults and senior programming in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with housing foundation of Sarpy for Sarpy County for development director assistance in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation for the Chamber Small Business Assistance Program in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub recipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County for the home repair program in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I'll move to approve sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement with Alfred Benish for the Everett Park pickleball courts and parking lot in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Thank you Mayor, I make a motion to approve sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen I approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Street Scan USA Inc. for assessment management in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty nine thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you Mayor, motion to approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen J approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Dean Schneider Construction for the fire department outbuilding addition and parking lot phase three in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Thank you Mayor, I make a motion to approve sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen K approve and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award and agreement with Omni Engineering for the two thousand twenty five overlay projects in an amount not to exceed one million four hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and forty five cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you Mayor, motion to approve item sixteen K.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen L approve and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award and agreement with N L and L Concrete Inc. for the two thousand twenty five concrete projects package one in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty two thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion to approve item sixteen I. I'm sorry, sixteen L.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen M approve final payment to American Fence Company in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars and forty five cents. Approve project as substantially complete and accept final project quantities and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins.
I make a motion to approve item sixteen M.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen N approve and authorize the mayor to sign the temporary waiver of sidewalk construction with Bellevue University. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins.
I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen N.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister.
I would sure like to help Bellevue University, but I don't wanna do it at the expense of our library across the street or the other pedestrians trying to get through that area. It's not good to keep doing these waivers, busy streets. We need to put as many sidewalks in as we can, even if they may not go somewhere right now. Eventually, we need to connect them. We need to make sure we follow through on our complete streets that we have in ordinance, which this would be a part of. Bellevue University has a wonderful winding trail that goes down right to the corner of the intersection, but it goes nowhere. This can, I believe, part of the sidewalk will connect to that and eventually we need to put in other sidewalks. But if we grant the waiver now, I don't expect staff to have to monitor this to see when it comes back to us. And I think it breaks faith with trying to make a public library accessible to the public, especially children that are out there on an already busy street. So for those reasons, I'm willing to lay it over to work something out, but at this point, I can't support another waiver.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Casey.
I'm not sure if this is a Mary Hawkins question or a Dave Goakin question, but could somebody talk to the justification or the reasoning behind the the need for this waiver, what the kinda long-term plan is?
Well, the request was uh in in lieu of putting the sidewalk along the street, they did build the the winding sidewalk through their property and that when they approached this about it, that was their, uh I guess their justification for that. And the there was one question I overheard was what what does temporary mean? To these, all these waivers are temporary, that's the way the ordinance is written on it. Uh when you get a building permit to add square footage to your property, um whether it be a resident or a business, uh it kicks in the process of needing to build a sidewalk on your frontage. Obviously, when they built their field house, that brought that on and then they're, so temporary means that if the city ever deems necessary to have a sidewalk there, uh the waiver is no longer valid and then you would have to build at that time. So that's what temporary means. You wanna add Jim?
Yeah, let me add to that. So the other thing is on Harvell where the sidewalk was suggested to go, it's a very narrow approach to the street. So from a safety concern, I think that's why the winding side through the university was proposed in place of it, which made more sense to where it's not like right off the street. If you look at where the traffic signal is, you're like a foot off of the road there. So a little more or less ADA compliant, difficult to maintain and probably keep you out of traffic. But when you think about the library on the north side of Harvell, we are putting a sidewalk in from Galvin all the way up and that'll extend down to Fort Crook. When you get to Fort Crook Road, you can't literally, if you go to Richmond Village, you can't go towards, if you wanna go to Dino's or Walmart, you're gonna have to cross the street to get to the north side of Cornhusker to walk over. So that sidewalk will connect into from Harvell, Fort Crook into Cornhusker and you'll be able to stay in one continuous walk lane. So our plan is in its budget this year to put the sidewalk in and it's even for us, uh from Galvin to where the library is, that's gonna be, it's got a heck of a grade to put that on. So it's a little tricky for us, but that's our commitment is to put that sidewalk in and we felt that what the university put in actually probably more ADA compliant and more safe for anybody that was gonna use that sidewalk. So it only made sense to waive that portion off. Um and with us committing to put on the north side of the street, I think we've we've got a good plan there, so.
So the sidewalk that winds through and is a nice, more of a trail than really a sidewalk and is ADA compliant is meant to replace what would be out on Galvin Road. So we're not really looking at a future sidewalk out there. This is temporary. We wouldn't even be looking at replacing it. Is that?
No, we'd like to use what the university has long-term. I mean, it's and we will have a sidewalk on the other side. So yeah. And there was a sidewalk that comes up on the south side that goes up to where the karate place is.
Right.
It stops at the karate building because they haven't changed anything in there, so we haven't been able to extend that. That sidewalk, when that sidewalk was put in fifteen years ago, I believe, uh the city signed off that we would maintain that sidewalk. So we shovel it and we maintain it and with the exception we made, because we had them put the sidewalk in. Um so we're already maintaining that, but it dead ends out. So you still would be able to connect to the university ultimately. Now, long-term, if we ever decided to put a sidewalk in, I think we'd put that back on us. But we truly like the way the design the university has used from a safety aspect. And if you walk that side of that road, you're right on the street with a sidewalk and uh it's a busy road. It's, I would say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust walking on that sidewalk. So that's why we kinda uh took the university's approach for a much safer approach as you get to Fort Crook. On the other side, we'll complete our side and uh which we'd already planned and budgeted when we talked about the library, so.
And it's good news to me to know that on the north side, on the library side, we will continue and put in that sidewalk yet this year, you're saying, right? Okay.
That budgeted day?
I believe that's gotta be next year's, it was a CDBG project and I believe that's next year's money, but I will verify that.
But we had that budget.
But it but it is approved.
Next year being September.
Yes.
Okay, and then once we get to the corner and you mentioned having to cross back and forth, but it would correct some of that. What about traffic signals or pedestrian kinds of crossings at that busy intersection? Are we going to incorporate something like that into the sidewalks and the whatever happens at that intersection?
So on Fort Crook to cross Fort Crook from Harvell towards the Cornhusker side, those are, the the ADA ramps are already in place and I believe the signal is made for the crosswalk on that side. Um well, it's a six lane to cross, but there is a place for them to stop in that center median and stand, which is always an issue that if you're putting them across a busy traffic lane. But on the north side, that is set for that type of crosswalk. Where on the south side, going towards Richmond Village, it's not conducive for a pedestrian to cross at that area. It's also kinda, there's no sidewalk on the other side, it dead ends out and you could walk to the west where on the north side on Cornhusker, you can walk all the way down to Bellevue West, I take it, so.
I I appreciate the attention, some of which I. I, I appreciate the attention, some of which I am recalling, some of which I'm just learning. But I appreciate the attention to the sidewalks and public pedestrian safety. It's so key. Just like with the bicyclist, we don't want anybody injured out there. Thank you.
I haven't walked that. I might walk down it, but I don't know if I'll walk up it, but. Uh, it is all lighted though, correct? Okay. Yeah, come up to, I'll invite you up to the mic.
Mayor, that's a four-foot sidewalk too, isn't it, inside the university?
Mary Hawkins, four one four Greenbrier Court, Bellevue. Um, the, the issue of the sidewalk was really important to us. Initially, we had put in the plan that we would go along Harvell, but as our engineers and the staff looked at that, we really thought that we weren't gonna be able to accommodate some of our students who are walking along and up there with, um, we have one sight impaired student. I think some of you have seen him. He uses a walking stick. So, we, we did the ADA, it is ADA compliant. It is fully lit up to the top. When you get up to the top, you can go up to Herman Drive, and there's a crosswalk in there that's just, it's right across from the karate shop, and it stops in the median. Anyone can press it. There's a flashing light that, it doesn't go to a full stop. There's a flashing light that alerts cars to stop, but it's right, not right on Harvell. It's probably twenty feet, a little bit south. But we were really attentive to the fact that that, walking that hill, especially in the winter, when they start clearing or there's ice, is just detrimental. So, there's a straight sidewalk on the north, our, um, Serpentine Crosswalk on the right with lights.
And I appreciate the Serpentine sidewalk. Once they get up to the top of that, then how, how will they connect to get out to other sidewalk?
They can do one of two things. They can cross, um, from our side of the field house to the karate shop. There's that, that temporary pedestrian, it's a pedestrian light. And then, at Herman Drive, there is an actual crosswalk, and people can, um, press walk to go across. There is not one down by the library, but there is up there on Herman Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Casey.
I would just say, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Preister. I think we need to do a better job of connecting these sidewalks. That said, I think, uh, this is an acceptable exception to the, to that rule, and I think it's obviously, as Mary states, been very well thought through, uh, and hopefully better for everybody that's transitioning in that area. So, I'm in favor of this one.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister.
I've been convinced. Thank you all.
I can say it probably wasn't cheaper. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Collins, seconded by Burns on sixteen N. Please vote.
All, all voting yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. At this time, I just wanna announce, uh, for Public Works, they have their, um, manhole open at Trigaron on May twenty-second, so just putting that out there. So, I know they'd like some participation in that from the city, so. Are there any other comments on the reports?
Could I make, could I make a comment? Some shameful recognition. So, when we, the university project for Baseball Village and the Atlanta Exchange up on Longo, wanna give a shout out. Tony worked a lot of endless, countless hours along with the, uh, Bellevue University team to put this together and make it happen. It's important to know that, much appreciated all your work and effort on that, and, um, part of the A team. But, uh, people wanna know that you were very, very helpful in getting this done. Am I wrong, Mary? There you go.
You didn't do all this?
Absolutely not. It's all Tony. So, if something goes wrong, I'm just kidding. No, but seriously, thank you, Tony.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's an excellent example of how it may look like things are just formalities, and we vote to approve them here. But there's a whole lot of work that goes into making this look easy when we're here doing what we do in approving these things. And we have an excellent staff. Our department heads, all the way down, our city administrator, all the way through our entire staff, our police, our fire, our public works, our directors, are doing an excellent job. I have tremendous respect and tremendous regard for the work and the quality of work that everybody does. This was just another example, and people in, in the public usually don't see any of that. But kudos to all staff. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for that, Councilman Preister. And I'll just add to it, um, our staff works a lot. I mean, there's a lot of projects going on. There's a lot of challenges, whether it's with the state legislator or, or, um, just right here, just our own ordinances. I mean, just trying to make things work. They work really hard at these projects. So, um, just a lot of credit goes to everybody working on them, and that's the whole city. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll file those reports. There is no closed session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you.